How are you okay to this?
Yes ma'am.
For the pledge to wish. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, uh, the mayor is not here, so I'm filling in for him. And I'll make a few announcements at the beginning here. First of all, tomorrow is election day. The polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. It's an election day for everybody who's a registered voter. If you arrive at a polling place that says you can't vote there, you can have your address checked. There's supposed to be an instant way to check your address, and maybe you're supposed to be at Downs Lane instead. It's not resolved. You can always do what's provisional or affidavit valid by paper. So, you know, things usually go smoothly here, and I just encourage everyone to vote. There are at least seventeen elections, you know, positions to vote for, so there are many, many.
Including?
Oh, yes, including our own village trustees.
I think we're number nineteen.
Oh, no, 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 at least seventeen.
So, don't lose interest.
No, keep going. Keep going down to Long Road. Yeah, it is always exciting. You know, if there's a governor's race, then there's our individual race here, so. There are a lot of ways of getting information. I just noticed upstairs we have the nonpartisan League of Women Voters flyers up there. Upstairs in Village Hall, I could bring some down here, but it doesn't look like there's a big crowd of people, so. But they're on the table in the lobby. Anything else about election day that I've left out? Thanks.
I think that was, is it, Mr., does it remind anyone to vote?
Yeah, right.
And if someone calls the office, we can always look upstairs, but it's all at the Board of Election website.
Right.
It's where they have the lookup.
Right, right, right.
Did you say the poll time, hours, six to nine?
Yeah, six to nine, yeah. So, alrighty. There are also, besides the announcements on the official agenda here, there were several more that inadvertently got left out. But I'll start with the Peter Olley Turkey Trot is on Sunday, November eighteenth. The race starts at 1:00 p.m. It's 2.5 miles, not quite like the New York City Marathon yesterday.
But it's hours.
But it's hours. The holiday tree lighting, if looking forward, is always the first Saturday in December, so December fir lighting itself is at 5:00 p.m. But there are other things that day at the Main Street School and elsewhere. Now, what's not listed there is Veterans Day. Veterans Day is Sunday, November eleventh. Our ceremony is up at our Veterans Memorial Plaza at 10:45 a.m. And also, I think Brian, Mayor Smith, will be sending out a letter, but thanking everybody involved with Halloween. I wasn't here, but I understand there was a nice contribution from the outer suburbs to the inner suburbs for candy, and that the police were on top of all pedestrians. I don't know if anybody was down here, observed things. Yes, 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 yes.
Big crowds for the music.
Yes, so the need, the need for police out in the farm, so many people are down here, the most support, and that was entertainment, free entertainment. And certainly anybody who made a candy contribution is certainly appreciated by the village. So those are the announcements. We have correspondence, which I'll look to now, and I see one of our corresponders is here. First, let me just cover Charles Goldman sent a letter related to the bulk pickup product. We've had a, since, we're gonna say the beginning of this year, there's, there was a policy announced that if material was too big to be picked up on the regular pickup, that the garbage trucks would come back for bulk pickup, and then the customer would be charged $25. It doesn't count things that are recyclable. There's both metal, I believe, and some other things, and the resident is never charged for that. But Mr. Goldman says, "As a longtime Irvington resident, I was amazed to learn there isn't charge for bulk garbage pickups. I always believe the taxes we pay include this service." It is particularly surprising to me that this rule was established last year after recent significant tax increases on the village, some of the highest in the country. When I mentioned this to my neighbors, they were equally astonished. One of them said to me, "What's next? Every time the fire department or the police department answers the call, we will be charged." Not so absurd as it seems on the surface. I since learned that other municipalities charge for bulk pickups, but are their taxes as high as Irvington. What's upsetting is not the actual charge, but the idea of a charge in something ordinarily identified included in the taxes we pay. Imagine if New York City imposed a refuge fall away charge. I do believe residents would be up in arms. I sincerely hope that perhaps the board and mayor would reconsider the imposition of this charge. The second correspondent is from the Greater Irvington Land Trust. I can summarize that. I see Chet is here. Chet, if you want to do your three minutes or under, if it covers your points, that's fine. I made a little summary, but I don't get to do it.
Okay. I'm Chet Curran, Board Member of the Greater Irvington Land Trust, and I was one of the signatories in the letter. I actually, I think the letter speaks for itself. I think we tried to outline, I was here for the work session where Joe presented, Joe Archino presented on behalf of the Parks Department, some additional areas of the woods to be made into parkland, and we, as we reiterated, we support the areas that Joe identified. There were just some additional issues that we wanted the board to understand. I can answer any questions you want about that. My reason for being here, however, is my board's asked me to come, is to try to determine what is now the process? What happens now going forward to hopefully bring? I recognize the board has many things on its plate, and this may or may not be one of many things we're considering, but I'm just trying to understand what is hap, what's the next step, and how can we assist in that effort?
Yeah, well, I don't know that I know all the details of that, but I can throw it over to Larry for a second.
Yeah, so, you know, after we did have that work session, we have assembled a resolution, a draft resolution, to dedicate the various parcels that are in need of dedication to be dedicated as parkland. There's an open point, which is actually something that you speak to in your, in your letter, your last point about the description of the compost site, transfer site. And we are initially searching our records to see if we have a meets and bounds description of that. We think we do, but we're researching that. If we don't, we may need to hire a surveyor to describe it. So the resolution is on hold based on that one piece of information, but otherwise it's fully drafted and ready to go. There are two points that you raise in your letter that I'll explain how they're being handled based upon the way the board responded to them at the work session, which is Worthington Farm is not being dedicated, but it's still under consideration. I think it's the way they left it. So we're not holding up the rest of the dedication process based on that one parcel. I think they needed either more information or time to think about it, or, you know, maybe your information will help move that along, I don't know. The other point is the one about passive parkland, and that's a point that they had already taken a position on, but I don't know whether the information and requests that you put in your letter will alter that in any way. But nothing is being dedicated specifically as passive parkland at this point. So, but that's those.
So, in light of that, if made, then I can speak briefly. In terms of the Worthington parcel, I think there was a lot of discussion about, and concern about the board, about that being not contiguous to the rest of the area that would be designated as part of this park. The point we make in our letter is, I think it's really important for the board to understand that designating something as parkland is really largely done, one, to create a park, but also really protect property, open space property. And there is, I think, a need in the community, and my board feels strongly there's a need in the community, where appropriate to protect open space and ensure that it's preserved as open space. And this is the mechanism by which to do that, even if it's not then formally made part of the Irvington Woods Park, but it takes on a legal consequence by having this board do that, that ensures that property, which is at this point largely inaccessible, will continue to be open space. It is outside the watershed, but very close to the watershed. It is, I think, not spaced. We strongly urge the board to designate it as parkland, even if not made part of the park. In terms of the-
Yeah, the public can also look back at our work session, too, to hear some of that discussion.
Right.
If they wanted some background.
Right, and if there's any background that I can offer the board, you know I'm willing to do that, so.
Yes, we are.
So, I am more than willing if there's-
We have a seat for you with a little side.
Well, no, 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 no. Actually, this is my board, it's not just me, and so, but I really, again, our hope is to try and help the board address these issues, which are, you know, longstanding, whatever. And so if there is specific information about the history of the property, its location, whatever, we're more than willing to dig in and help the board in any way we can.
It's really good to know. You have been very helpful, and all that information, the history, has been very helpful.
Good, good. You know, in terms of the passive, in terms of the passive issue, I think we've set our piece, you know, and our position remains the same. I, I've heard what the board has said, but I, and so, again, we just asked the board to consider the points we make in our letter, and then, and again, let me also say on behalf of our board, how much we appreciate the fact that you guys have worked hard to look at all these issues and come to something that I think will be a tremendous asset for the village. If, if and when, and I say when, the board designate this is all as parkland, it will become one of the largest parks in Southern Westchester, and it's a testament to our community, to many people that stood before us, and to all of you in making that happen. So I just appreciate that. So thank you very much.
I appreciate your help and your comments.
Good.
Five points.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you, Chet. Public comment from anyone?
Except Chet.
Hi. You have the public at the moment. Okay, well, we do have public comment at the end. You never know, who might arrive.
Chet, you won. Yes, thank you very much.
Oh, okay. All right. The consent agenda, did anybody have any comments on the minutes or on the appointment of personnel in Recreation Department? That's part of the consent. Okay. Do I make a motion to accept that?
Yes.
Okay, I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Approved? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Okay. All right, the next, numbers seven, eight, nine, and ten, on the agenda all have to, no, seven, eight, nine, all have to do with tax.
And we're going to revise for eight?
But did you want to say anything about, there's an extra page, yes, that got revised. A revised page?
Eight.
Eight, okay. Page seven, eight, and nine, okay. But on agenda, number seven, eight, and nine.
So, yeah, so the three, the three search areas that you have in front of you are, are all fairly small, as you can see. The key number on each of those is, is what the actual refund is. So, the first item is Almea Tech, which is ninety, oh, sorry, Seventy-Nine Main Street. It's a relatively small commercial property here on, on Main Street. It's a multi-year refund running from 2009 through 2015. Total refund over those years is $10,577.56. The next resolution, which is revised only to revise some of the wording and maybe a spelling mistake, Berylson, Seven Ardsley Terrace, two-year reduction of, a total of $2,635.90.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Why is it, we don't get a significant reduction, why is the village's portion so small relative to the reduction indicated?
Because those years are after the revaluation was done, so the numbers-
So the way tax rate-
The numbers are bigger now, yeah, no. And you can see the difference when you, when you look at the first one, for example. Those are all prior to the revaluation.
Right, right, got it.
Yeah. Okay, and that's, sorry, that was Seven Ardsley Terrace. The third is Sixty-Eight River View Road, Barry Stewart, sorry, two last names, Barry and Stewart.
Barry.
And those are 2012 to 2015, total refund of $1,803.08. So fairly small, all of which fit well within our budget that we have.
So, Larry, this is both the town and the village are agreeing to do this together?
Yes, the, the process that we use is that the town is essentially the keeper of the role, of course, so they, in large part, can drive the process, but in cases where the property is located in a village, they do allow council from the villages to participate in the discussions. Now, these are very minor, my suspicion is that there wasn't a lot of involvement on our, on our part, but if they were more significant properties, our council would be involved in the negotiations, so that the, the town doesn't negotiate something that we don't find acceptable and vice versa, I'm sure, so.
And with the school district involvement in this, or is that a separate?
They, they can be as well. So if it, if it involves a school district property, they can be. Now, again, these are relatively small, so I'm not sure what their level.
Okay, so there are discussion on these? So shall I go ahead and do resolutions on, should I do them all separately?
Yeah, they're all separate resolutions, but I think you can summarize by, you know, owner's name, address, and total refund.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion on the issue of authorizing tax serciari settlement at Seventy-Nine Main Street, the property owner over years 2009 to 15, with adjustments in all those years, with the village of Irvington share of the refund at $10,577.56. So I'll make the motion to approve that. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the second resolution, authorizing tax serciari settlement at Seventy Ardsley Terrace. This is property Berylson, over two different years, 2016 and 17. The village's share of this is $2,635.90, so I'll make that motion. And a second?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. The third one is resolution authorizing tax serciari settlement at Sixty-Eight River View Road. Property owners Joseph Barry and Susan Stewart, over 2012 to 2015. The village's share, the refund, is $1,803.08, so I'll make that motion, and I need a second.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay. Item ten on the agenda is authorization to approve a change order number two for the sign manufacturer. So this is a, a change based on what we thought was a discount, and we put that number in, and it's actually slightly figured differently, and the final amount is going back up, which is not its original amount anyway. So this is not an increase, in a sense, from the original bid that we got from them.
Right, right, yeah, we made, we had a little misunderstanding with the vendor. If you remember, when we awarded this contract back in maybe the beginning of October, at the same time that we awarded the contract, we had a credit change order in the amount of $10,100. We had understood that there were certain discounts being applied to certain of the items. We, we had the items incorrect, so we kind of redid it and clarified which items the discount applied to, which then brings that back up from where we are now, up by another $5,500. So the, in net-net, we still have a discount from the original bid price, but not as much as we had thought.
But only a small part of this contract is being actualized to in front of Village Hall or the bulletin boards and the kiosk that will go up by the Veterans Plaza. That's the only part of this, but we now know who can be the vendor for all of the potential signs, the wayfinding signs.
I know you answered this before. Who's doing the installation? Is it our DPW, or is it, are this sign company, or TBD?
It's TBD. The, we have to look at the, the complexity of each of the signs, the ones, the bulletin boards, we may have a local company do that for us, whereas some of the simpler signs may be done in-house. So it's, it's really TBD.
Okay.
And those, the two, the three signs that were ordered, the two bulletin boards and the kiosk are both fairly complicated, so, you know, we're gonna, it'll either be a good test run, or we'll be using someone else.
Right.
So we'll look at it.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so I'll make a motion, authorization to approve change order number two for sign manufacturer, and resolve to change order two to contract 2018-14 with Signarama in the amount of $5,500, and to authorize the village administrator to execute, execute said change order. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that moves us on to number eleven, reinstatement of Gregory R. Nielsen as superintendent of Public Works. This is not as complicated as it sounds.
So, yeah, so-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Our superintendent of public works, Greg Nielsen, notified us of his intention to retire. It's actually effective, well, Wednesday, but that would make tomorrow his last day. But it's also our desire to have him continue working, and he does wish to continue working, so we are, have applied for, from the county, for his reinstatement as of November eighth. So there's actually a break in service, and, you know, all within the rules of the pension system, as previously explained.
Not asking for a waiver?
Same salary, no, it's not a, it's within the rules and no exceptions, but it's the same salary.
Any discussion on this?
And I should note that it does save the village a significant amount of money, almost $30,000, we believe, between no longer contributing to his pension and a different, different level of health insurance, just the way Medicare works. So it's a win-win.
I feel very lucky we have Greg in that position, that he's interested in continuing, and we thank him for that interest, so.
And the staff is very happy that he's on probation for the next year.
Oh, yes, that is the happiest part.
Even though he's been working here for 20 years, they all enjoy that.
Watch out, Greg.
That'll be the gift that keeps on giving.
Okay, this is a resolution, reinstatement of Gregory R. Nielsen as superintendent of Public Works. So I'll make this motion, resolve to accept the resignation of Gregory R. Nielsen, Superintendent of Public Works, for the purpose of retirement effective November seventh, 2018, and further resolve to reinstate Mr. Nielsen to the position of superintendent of Public Works effective November eighth, at an annual salary of $142,646, subject to a probationary period of not less than 12 weeks, and not more than 52 weeks. So I've made that motion, I need a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
So is there gonna be a retirement party in the afternoon of the session? That we should know about?
Exactly. We already had it this morning at our department meeting.
That's great, okay. We should all be so lucky. Okay, number twelve, intermunicipal agreement with the New York State Police to participate in the TRACS, T-R-A-C-S, ticket and accident reporting system. So apparently this is a re-up of something we've done for quite a few years. It has no cost to us. I think Mary Ann has looked at this, and the chief has looked at this. Did you want to add anything, Larry?
Yeah, it is a contract that we've had, I believe, since 2008, although I didn't go back further than that, so, but it is a, an electronic, online reporting system with the state. The goal of it is to, is to eliminate the, the paper reporting and, that is required back to the state on moving violations and accident reports as well. So it's a system we participate in, you know, I won't say there's a tremendous amount of benefits back, other than there, you know, there are statistical information that we can get, you know, information that we can get back, and there's also information available for use in the court and in police investigations. So it's a, an information system that, that does benefit us in that way.
Would it be fair to say that it replaces the more onerous, you know, keeping things in paper, but it doesn't add a layer of record, record keeping?
No, I don't believe it adds anything.
Okay.
I mean, unless you consider some of the data entry aspects of it, but I think a lot of the, a lot of, a lot of the systems, a lot of the tickets and accidents begin electronically now anyway, so it's not-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Resolution, intermunicipal whole agreement with the New York State Police to participate in the TRACS ticket and accident reporting system. So I'll make this motion, resolve to authorize the village administrator to execute an intermunicipal agreement with the New York State Police, allowing the village to participate in the TRACS ticket and accident reporting system. A second, please?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number thirteen on the agenda, approval of a contract for a community coalition coordinator. Again, this is a repeat of, of a appointment with the I.A.S.K. program that is, of course, all funded by a grant, and we have two very able volunteers, Allison Felix and Tanya Hunt, who were just here a couple of weeks ago, that oversee this, but in this case, we, the grant actually pays to hire Lisa Tomine as the community coalition coordinator. So that's what this resolution is about. I don't know exactly how many years we've been going with this wonderful grant from I.A.S.K., if you remember, over a year?
I believe 2014, or somewhere in that range, yeah. I mean, I can look back, but around that.
Yeah.
Yep.
So it's been, it's been a wonderful program, and this, this Lisa Tomine makes, actualizes all the ideas that Allison and Tanya and various folks involved with it come up with, so she's a very valuable person. Is there any discussion about this?
This is a renewal of her contract, by the way.
Yeah, renewal of her contract.
She's not a, you know, she's not a brand-new hire.
Okay. Okay, I'll make the motion, resolve to hire Lisa K. Tomine as the community coalition coordinator for 780 hours of work per year, at the annual salary of $35,100, effective September 30th, 2018, through September 29th, 2019. So I make that resolution, and I need a second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number fourteen, review of draft local laws pertaining to downtown parking regulations. We've listed on the agenda one, two, three, four different parts of this, and there's a backup packet that's available to the public, that's just on the village website over the last few days. This is that public document. There are many parts of it, and we are, I was gonna say, we might be at the beginning of the end section of dealing with this, but we're not at the end of this process. We have not yet had a public hearing. We could have public hearing for many, many times. We could call for a public hearing tonight if we wish, but although we discussed this at the October tenth workshop, work session right here, this is another opportunity for the board members, and of course, we have public comment again, number seventeen on the agenda, so it's not yet a public hearing, but it's a good way for us all to go through what is of all of the changes in our local code required to make some of the changes that have been discussed. With that introduction, I'm sure a number of us here have comments, but Larry, you or maybe Mary Ann wants to kind of set the scene on what this packet of information is.
Right, right, so, so correct, the- Right, right, so, so correct, the last time we talked about this was at the work session back on October 10th, and at that work session, we reviewed a number of different changes. I needed some, you know, questions and feedback on a few things, and with that information, our village attorney, Mary Ann, went back and revised the various laws that are needed to be revised in order to implement the, the plan going forward. So I thought, given the fairly compact agenda tonight, I thought it would be helpful to use this time to just go through how the laws work. We're not going to review every single change. I can, I think I can draw, and really highlight the major changes that are happening, assuming and provided that you're, you're satisfied with that and that it reflects what we talked about at the last work session, which I think it does, you could call for a public hearing and open that on the 19th. That's, that's why we listed it on the agenda that way, but it's not, if you don't think you're ready yet, you don't have to. So ball's still in your court. So, so with that, attached to the agenda, there's four separate local laws, and as I said, my intention is not to go line by line, certainly, but the first section, it relates to limited parking.
You mean the first local law?
First local law, I'm sorry, yes. It's actually item 14A on the agenda, refers to limited parking, and really, the two main items in here, aside from some reorganization and some cleaning up of the, of this section, the two main items that are dealt with are two-hour parking on the side streets. So that's specifically is on page one, section 2A, and what is being proposed is two-hour parking on all, in the downtown area, except, except Buckout Street, North Buckout Street and Cottonet Streets.
North and South.
North and South.
And Astor, or was Astor? No, Astor's on here.
Astor's on here for two-hour parking.
Oh, okay.
So that is a change from, in large part, what is out there currently, which is six-hour parking on most of the side streets. There are a few pockets of twos here and there, but mostly six.
What is South Buckout Street Annex?
That's the, that's the little spur street right across from the entrance to the Astor Buck building, Trent building.
That's the only fish in that.
Well, yeah, so, so it's that little, little spur that goes up in front of the houses.
Oh, yeah.
That front on South Buckout Street, but they're not actually on South Buckout, they're on this little side spur.
Curves off there.
Okay.
There's like three houses.
There's the little grassy knoll.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know how it got the name, but I, it's, that's what was in the code.
I didn't know it had a name, okay.
Well, it's the South Buckout Street Annex, and like I said, I don't know.
The street next to South Buckout Street.
Yeah, whatever, exactly. So, so that's, that's one category of changes. There are a number of other edits in here that are related to moving things around to make that all work and make sense, but that's one major change. The other major change is, is simply to allow overnight parking on all of the streets within the downtown. That's not currently the case, the way the code is written. That is, that's shown on page two, in what is now new section B. And again, the way we've talked about overnight parking is, is the way that gets implemented is, no one can park for longer than one hour between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. That effectively is the way overnight parking is prohibited, or strongly discouraged, I guess you could say, except the streets that are listed here, and these would be all the streets within the downtown area.
Which is to say that all the rest of the village that has, does not allow overnight parking, still does not allow overnight parking.
There's no change to, to any of the other, there may, there may be other streets where it's specifically called out. I think there, there, there may be specific streets within the code, but, but we're not making changes to any of that, we're only looking at the downtown area. So, so the rest of this document for, is really cleaning up.
No, Larry, and the six-hour parking on page four.
Right, to, to continue, right, so that, and that, that works in concert with the, with the two-hour parking, right, I'm sorry, I should have brought those together.
Yeah.
So, page four, section E, new section E, is where the streets that are going to have six-hour parking continuing are listed there.
And those streets already have six-hour parking existing now, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, so what we did is move some six-hour side street to two hours, if I recall the discussion.
Yes.
So, no, nothing has made a six-hour that wasn't already a six-hour.
That's correct.
But nothing was taken off the six-hour.
Yeah, a lot would take off.
Except for the side, the side streets above.
Uh, Cottonet, yes.
And the, I know I wasn't at the work session, but the, the purpose or the idea of doing this is to free up parking spaces on the side streets within the commercial zone.
To have, to encourage more turnover, right. And, and keeping in mind that the residents that live off of those side streets are unaffected by the hourly change because they are entitled to resident parking permits that allow them to, to park in excess of that timeline. That's, that's the case right now, and would continue to be the case.
So this is really the effort, if I'm recalling the discussions, to balance the needs of residents on the side streets with providing adequate, longer-term parking for daytrippers?
Yeah.
I would say, as Larry goes through, that it's a very intricate puzzle, looking at the needs of different constituents, if you'd like to put it that way. Obviously, there are people who come to Main Street to shop and to go to restaurants, there are employees, there are residents, there are commuters, there are business owners, so there are many, many needs within this finite number of parking spaces in this 1850s laid-out village. So it is, it is complicated, and as, as I, I'm gonna say, every time somebody thinks about one part, it's probably good to look at all the parts, to see, you know, one change here has some effect on this other change here, and they're connected, but I, I digress.
No, that's fine. So Mary Ann, unless I missed anything else, that, the rest of it is really just, is-
Just a comment, if I may, I understand that this is, we're not changing anything else besides the specific things that are laid out as changes, but D, which is now be, no vehicle shall be parked on any street, effectively, between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM, effectively precludes overnight parking everywhere in the village, including way beyond downtown.
Right.
And this is something we decided not to take out on right now, because there was plenty enough on your plate, particularly, but I think we probably ought to finish the job and take a look at that in the future, in the fairly near future as well, so it can be a fully functioning plan.
I happen to agree with that.
Yep.
But that would be the things you're talking about, Janice, on like page three-
Yes.
-relating to, there's east side and then there's west side.
Well, page, page two, no motor vehicle should be parked on any street, longer than an hour between 3:00 and 6:00. And actually, I had so much fun today going back and forth with the big green code and this, but there's not that many sections of the code that aren't addressed here. So that's the biggest outstanding issue, I think, is overnight parking and the alternate side of the street parking, and they go together.
And how the two interact, yeah.
Yeah, they definitely interact, because we only, you know, we only say like, we named the day, no parking Wednesday or whatever, but that's essentially 12:01 to 11:59, so it eliminates two nights' parking. Anyway, it's the next chapter of this, but I think in the interest of fairness to everybody, we shouldn't let it get lost.
Right.
And I will volunteer to work on that.
And, yeah, and as I had sort of alluded to in an exchange with you, the, you know, this is fairly complicated, going through this.
Yeah, yeah.
Obviously, the, the notion and the issue that you're raising is actually pretty complicated. I mean, there's just, there's interesting interactions, and there's, there's long-running parking situations that you're now dealing with, whether it's no parking in an area ever overnight on the street, and now you're thinking of changing that, or maybe you're not, or, so there's a, there's a lot of interactions that have-
We should, yeah.
Because you're talking about the entire village, you're now talking about areas that have all different characteristics, not just, you know, the downtown area, which is kind of fits nice and neatly into a, into a little box.
But this as written doesn't just affect downtown, because it says any street.
Well, it doesn't change?
No, but it doesn't change anything.
Right, it doesn't change, but that's what's in existence now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm just saying tackling the other thing is, is different, because it's a wide variety of areas.
In addition to which, I think tackling it, trying to tackle it while doing, trying to make these changes-
No, we totally, no, we're on the same page with that.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I, once, once this is in place, not that that won't be hard, but it just won't be impossible.
No, no.
And please don't misunderstand, I wasn't suggesting holding this up in any way.
No, not at all.
Too much work has gone into this, Larry.
No, we, we agree on that point, for sure. Good.
But I, I think that the public will be very interested in reading this whole thing, and I think they should, even the parts that are staying the same.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll make, what I think will, will be helpful, not necessarily helpful for tonight, but what I think we'll make available is, are both the edited version, I should say, the showing the change, the annotated and the clean version as well.
Yes, well, I have that, I mean-
Yeah, no, it's already done, I didn't-
... documents, but there's no point doing that tonight, because the board should see what the changes are.
Right.
And I think everybody wants to see what the changes are, but then to end up seeing what it is, but it's available, both are available.
Yep, yep. Okay, so the second of the laws is 14B on the agenda, relates specifically to municipal parking areas, and Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the best way to characterize the changes in here is really, this was a cleanup of, of the municipal parking areas that were in the code. There was a variety of misnomers, things that were mislabeled, you know, just things that required cleaning up, but, but I think if you really dig through the, the set of changes here, there's really nothing that's changing anything fundamentally, it just, it cleans things up and creates proper references.
And, yeah, before they were called like Parking Area 6, nobody knew what that was. Now we call them, you know, like the Aqueduct Lot and the Aster Lot, so you understand what they are, and then, yeah, I, I don't think there were really many substantive changes except for changes to reflect what the actual practice is.
Right.
Like on the, on, on, on page five, you know, about, you know, about paint, really not, how many permits are issued and stuff like that, this was just actually reflecting the, the practice, but no, I don't, I don't think there were substantive changes. Oh, like, okay, for instance, on page four, it was changed from January to February, because that's actually the date that they are issued. So what this does, it does two things, one is it kind of clean, it cleans things up quite a bit, I think.
Yep.
And then it, where, where the language of this was inconsistent with the practice-
Right.
-it was made to be consistent with the practice.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I mean, permits have been issued on February 1st since all the years I've been here, so, but it never was-
Yeah, and they've been for six-month periods, not three-month periods.
Exactly.
You know, stuff like that was wrong.
Yeah.
I just have a question, comparing the two lots, C and F, Hudson Road West and Northly Avenue West, and the other one is Hudson Road West, 671 feet from the southern end of the train sta-, I'm just having trouble visualizing.
Are you, letter D on page one?
Letter C on page one and letter F on page two?
Yeah.
They sound like they're real close to each other.
They are, they are, but they have different, they have different rules that apply to them. So the letter C represents the parking spaces closest to the Ardsley Train Station and heading up the hill from the train station, so on Hudson Road West, on the right-hand side, the angled spaces where a new sidewalk is. That is letter C.
Ardsley Station.
Right. Around the corner by the tennis courts.
That's F.
That's F.
Okay, fine.
And there are different rules that apply, because we allow, we allow hourly parking in those spaces near the tennis courts, for what I think are obvious reasons, because of the use of the tennis courts during the summer hours especially, and whereas the other spaces, there's no hourly parking allowed, so there had to be a breakpoint. And that, that was in the code previously, I think we might have just cleaned up some, some things to make it read better.
Well, the one I had a question mark on is D, and I, I read it multiple times, and I couldn't quite figure out, I think I know what, where it is, adjacent to the sewage disposal plant, the Buckout Street Lot, but could we read that, the script or, the municipal parking lot located between Aster Street and, between Aster Street and South Buckout Street, and the north side of Station Road? Is that the accurate description of where that is? I was having trouble seeing that. Does that sound right to everybody else?
Right.
Because Aster Street, you mean the coming up the hill, Aster Street?
Right.
It meets-
Where it meets South Buckout and Station Road, yeah.
South Buckout, that's a point.
Yeah.
Located between, so how can it be between when they meet? Well, no, it means, I guess it would be clear if you said, I think what you mean is between the intersection of Aster Street and South Buckout and the north side. I thought it was, no, I thought it was on the south, or on the west side of Buckout Street, between Aster Street and Main Street, across from-
That's fine.
-the sewage disposal plant.
Uh, adjacent to, yeah.
Adjacent to?
Yeah.
It's on the same side as?
Mm-hmm. It's the west side, it's the west side of South Buckout Street.
Oh, I thought the sewage treatment plant was that little building right at the front.
No, that's the, that's, that's the county sewage treatment.
Ah, okay, okay.
The sewage treatment plant that we're talking about here, that we no longer treat sewage at, is the DPW facility.
Ah, that clears it all up. But I still think it's-
Clear as mud.
-on South Buckout Street, between Aster and, well, the, what's the next street? Main Street.
Call it the Urst Wells, which would have a certain number of feet up from the intersection of South Aster and South Buckout.
It just, it didn't seem to have anything to do with Station Road, but if ever-
I, I wasn't here when they wrote this, let me tell you.
Station Road is kind of an offset intersection, so it's confusing.
Yeah. All right, so-
You want to change it, or is this okay with everybody else?
I can revise it, it's fine.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
I think this counts as a minor revision.
Well, no, we haven't advertised, we haven't done anything yet.
Yeah, right, anyways, not public hearing it anyway. Oh, I know, Larry, the other thing on top of three about removing the do not block entrance sign, it was just so weird.
I'm sorry, where?
This provision on the top of page three, I always thought it was a funny provision that was in there, the sign, do not block entrance-
At the end of the Poska curve.
-shall be posted at the end of the Poska curve. Because that was the owner of the-
The gas station.
-of the gas station, yeah. I was just a funny provision.
No, there's, there are funny ones.
Any municipal parking here, I guess.
No, I know, it, it clearly doesn't belong in-
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a very limited number of people that know what a Poska curve type is.
No, I was just saying, because I thought it was funny, and I think that really thought it was just-
Yeah. So anyway, we'll revise that description, that's fine, that makes sense. But beyond that, there's, there's nothing here other than to make, really tighten up the descriptions that are here.
Oh, this next one's going to be a surprise. I love it.
Yeah, so, so the next one is probably a little bit more complicated, but the, the next one is 14C, and that relates to resident parking permits currently. So the proposal relates to the fact that if you're, if you're changing the hourly limits on the side streets from six down to two, you have a, a group of employees who work on Main Street who are already parking on those side streets, maybe for six hours, maybe they're moving their car once a day, whatever it is, but in any case, you know, there, there still is a need for those employees to park. So we're not introducing more people, more employees parking in these areas, because they're already there. In fact, in some ways, there may be a limit. In fact, in some ways, there may be a limit created by, by the way this code is structured, and that's something that, that we can review. But essentially, what we're doing is we're extending the provisions of the resident parking permit program, and creating a, an employee parking permit. The employee parking permit...
Well, it's actually an employer parking permit.
Employer parking permit, yes, thank you. No, you're right, it's important.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the, the employer parking permit would be issued to employers in the area, which is defined in here, the owner or operator of a business located within this restricted parking zone, which is the downtown areas, essentially. And the employer would be eligible to receive up to two employer parking tags. And that parking permit would be for the use of its employees during the hours that they're working for that area employer. So, it's not just a free pass that they can start passing around to people, it's used only during those hours that they may be working for that employer. And the tag gives them essentially the same ability to park on the street in excess of the time posted. And so, that's, that's essentially it, there's, there's a few other minor changes, one of them being to the, to the hours, the hours during which these parking tags are effective. They would be changed from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, would be changed to 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And that simply lines up with, with the time period during which the parking hourly limits are actually effective. If we went back to that first section that we covered, the hourly limits for two-hour parking and six-hour parking are only effective during Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So, beyond that, there's no need for any special privileges. So, that's all that is.
So, the idea with, with the employer parking pass would, would be now they can park for six hours in one, one spot anywhere on a side street, and then after six hours, we have to move.
Right.
And a resident can park for as long as they want to and need to park in any spot.
Right.
There'll be two, two tags per business...
Up to?
Up to two. Up to two tags per business, that will, will give them the same parking rights while they're working.
Yes.
So, so, and that tag is transferable from employee to employee?
Yes. That's why they're issued to the employer.
Right, right, right. So, if one employee is working for four hours, they can park for four hours in a two-hour spot, and then when they leave, another employee can take that same tag, it's not like, like it's assigned to a particular employee.
Correct.
So, that allows it to have the, the flexibility of two employees at a time, but multiple employees being able to use the tags.
Yes.
But going to that example, if somebody moves their car after four hours and brings the tag back to the employer, who then gives it to another employee, who now is working six hours, we're going to perhaps have longer than six on that tag on a given day, right?
Well, the tag is like a resident tag.
Because no limit of six hours is no...
Oh, it's not a six-hour tag, right.
Yeah, right. It's just like a resident tag.
It's like a resident tag, okay.
Right.
You know, it's confusing, James, I notice.
Yes.
I guess that the, the, the one, the one sort of question we had about that was, was the number, I mean, just to get, just to have a lot to consider...
Because the question I have...
...with the, with the two per employer, but that, to me, is an issue you guys might want to discuss.
Right, because the observation was...
One, one second, one. Otherwise, it really pretty much, these employer parking permits pretty much parallel the resident parking permits in virtually every way, except how many an employer gets. That, to me, that's the open question. Are you agree, Larry?
Yes, but...
Yes, the substantive...
But they're also transferable, a resident parking permit isn't transferable between two cars.
You're right. It's the employer's.
The employer is the main, it's a person here.
Right, yes, it's a, it's an employer's. It's a tag that hangs on your, the wind, the mirror.
No, but it is associated with a license plate, the, the resident, your question is, is it transferable?
Well, between two cars, let's say they have two cars, can they, are they both able to use it?
They, they need a separate tag for each vehicle.
You mean the employer, is the employer, the resident can't move it around?
Right.
Right.
We don't have two cars, two, no, it, it's, it's associated with a particular registration, because we need to confirm that in fact the people live in the restricted parking area and their car is registered to that address, because...
Right, but you already know if they have one, two, or more vehicles, right, because they'll come to you with the vehicle.
And they'll get one, two, or three tags.
Number three, right?
Well, there's...
The size.
There's, there's, yeah, there's limits, there's limits based upon the size of the household, and I think three might be the max, but I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
The, the law here says two, and then it says something about a, an exception, a hardship or something, so it's not...
It was a rotting...
But if you look at the bottom of three, if it...
Yeah, there was a little confusion on that, yeah.
Yeah, the demonstrated hardship exists. May issue one to a one-vehicle and two to a two-vehicle, that's all.
I mean, I, I can look it up.
It doesn't say, I couldn't find it, I haven't seen more than that.
This was one of the codes that, that wasn't the easiest to understand at the time it was passed, so we translated it into an application form, an information form, that has like a, a simple table of household size, number of permits you're allowed, because it's also dependent on the number of parking spaces that you have on your property.
Yeah, but I think you're right, this law seems to limit it to two.
Yeah, it does seem to limit it to two.
Well, then maybe it is two.
And a number of residents shall not exceed the number of licensed drivers residing in the household.
Yeah, so you couldn't get two if there's just one person, right?
Right, yeah. But it doesn't say, if there are five, you're going to have five.
No, no, I know, it's not that.
But your form, I mean, we don't have the form...
It's got the, it lays out in a matrix...
Right.
What you're entitled to, I mean, really...
I don't see it, I don't, we don't have it in front of us, but...
Right.
Well, can we just verify that whatever it is is consistent with the current state, I guess?
Yeah.
It really has a limit to, no matter what size household or how much.
I can, I can look it up.
I'm just looking for the form. Anyway, Mark, I interrupted.
No, I was interrupting you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no, but the question about the...
Yeah, because you were bringing up exactly my point, which is that, in general, I have no problem with the employer concept, what I have a problem with is the actual mapping onto actual businesses. So, I mean, I can think of one or two specific businesses that seem to me to be way out of scale, their needs will be out of scale, and an example of that would be Jordane's, but I would say that if you look at almost any of the restaurants along Main Street, they too are going to have more than two employees, and probably significant number of employees, and an unknown number of them are going to be commuting by public transport. But, so I think that there's an issue for smaller businesses, and for like, not to cast aspersions, but you know, something on a business type, it's like an insurance company or some house, that probably don't have the same employee, or employee parking requirements or needs, but certainly, I think the restaurants and, and the service places like Jordane's are going to be put at a, at a disadvantage.
Can I, uh...
But it's six-hour parking up until a certain time, and after that...
No, it's two, well, it's two.
Or whatever, but up until a certain time, so you're talking restaurants, if we're talking dinner, it's not going to...
Well, there are restaurants that are open for lunch.
Right, right, but one, one thing I should, one thing I should point out is that we do have currently, maybe not right now while Con Edison is doing their thing, but we have capacity in the Aqueduct parking lot during the day. So, we will be able to sell a limited number, and it's not unlimited capacity, but we will be able to sell a limited number of Aqueduct daytime permits to those few businesses that have excess demand during times that the employer tag doesn't help them.
I, I mean, before 6:00 PM.
Before 6:00 PM for businesses like what you said...
Yeah.
...that are in a situation, so, so it may be that, you know, two employees hit the lottery and get to park close to where their business is, and one employee has a spot in the Aqueduct Lot.
What kind of capacity do you think we have in the Aqueduct Lot?
I think during the day, we have at least ten.
So, how are we, how are we getting this, once it becomes a law, how are we getting this notification out to the various businesses? And what's the process so that everyone realizes that they can, because it's going to be kind of a, a first come, first serve, and then wait in line for those extra passes at the Aqueduct, right?
Well, the employee, I mean, the employer has to come in, right, and say, "I'd like to actualize this."
Right. Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll communicate...
Well, I've clearly communicated to all the businesses, so they realize that they have to be proactive in order to solve a problem.
Right, yeah, I mean, we have, we have a fairly good inventory from some of our past exercises in this area. Is it complete, is it up to date, you know, we, we'll have time to work on that, but we also have some help from the chamber that's a little bit more organized now, but certainly the...
Can we get a way to notify these businesses as well about upcoming public meetings where they may not be getting the kinds of emails our residents are getting?
Yeah.
The businesses should have...
We can, I've, I've written letters...
Should be heard, yeah.
I've written letters over the, over the, so I have a, I have a full list of addresses, whether I have every single business name correct, I'd have to go back and look, but we have addresses up and down Main Street, for sure.
Yeah, I, I think this is something that the businesses will very much want to know about, my...
Well, I think you, you should be looking for their input, for sure.
Yes.
I mean, we, we did a certain amount of outreach during, during the development of all this, and...
And my recollection is that the business owners in general were in favor of there being more spots and more movements for their customers to come in.
Right.
Perhaps a little less concerned about where their employees would go.
Yeah, that's exactly the feedback that we got.
As long as their customers come in.
Right.
What's the status of the top of Main Street Lot, is that booked all the time, the one on the other side of Broadway?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty heavily used at certain times of the day, so it's not, there was some consideration to try to use maybe a portion of that for permanent parking or some sort of dedicated parking, but the, the capacity just doesn't allow for it.
In other words, the customers coming to those businesses need that, so...
Are they, is that a two-hour limited up there?
Yeah.
And is that lot getting extended as part of the Mucker Ridge?
There's a, a seven, seven or nine spaces that are being built there, I forget exactly the number, but...
It wants to be taken away, right?
But there's ones on Broadway that are being taken away.
Right, so it is getting expanded, but it's almost a...
It's not one-for-one, I think, there's a net gain.
I was saying, I was saying, I want to say a net gain of two or three.
Yeah, I think it's two, I think, I remember.
Yeah. So, I, not enough to even think about doing permits up there, but, and that's not, I guess it could be helpful, but the, the Aqueduct Lot is, is not far down the hill from there, so...
There were a couple of parts in this that, I just wanted a little verification, I'm not, not about the, the content, but whether or not it's exactly what it, what it means. There's, in this section, the, the page two under section three, C, is talking about vans and other vehicles, the commercial licenses shall not be eligible for resident or employer parking permits unless they are of the size that allows the vehicle to fit within the confines of one marked parking space. Commercial vehicles with more than four wheels are prohibited from obtaining a permit. I was just wondering, I, I underlined vehicle to fit within the confines of one marked parking space, and just wondering, are, are we, are we, aren't we really expecting that all of us fit into a parking space? I mean, isn't that, it's not just these vehicles? I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't the users of a parking space fit into the confines of a parking space? I don't know, it seemed to imply that others...
No, but this says that they can't, they shall not be eligible...
They shall not be eligible.
Unless they fit into a parking space.
So, essentially, it's almost saying, you're not eligible unless you're not bigger than a regular car. I, I don't think you have to say... I guess it was the commercial license plates, let's say they don't have commercial license plates, shouldn't they still fit into the parking spot?
Like a stretch memo? Well, I mean, if someone's driving a giant Suburban, if there's an employee driving a giant Suburban, they may not fit into a parking spot. Are they entitled to a...
Correct. Right, so that's, that's my concern, if we're, we're talking about fitting into a spot.
Because actually, it did talk about a Suburban-type vehicle, and...
Yeah.
Somewhere there was a definition of, of the cars that could get permits, right? Wasn't there somewhere?
Yes, there was.
And it specified a Suburban-type vehicle, I wasn't sure if he actually meant...
Yeah, I know, that's, I think it's an old-fashioned term.
Like a Chevy Suburban that has four rows and is as big as a truck, I don't know where that was.
I don't know if you want to think about whether or not that includes everybody that you meant it to include in that C.
Kind of which law are you on here?
This is, this is in the section we were just discussing, the law about...
14C, chair.
14B, okay.
14C.
P, 14C, page three.
And section three, part C, page two of that. The first...
Got it, okay.
The first line is vans and other vehicles. Well, I have, I have one other one that I wondered if...
So, did we resolve that?
Yeah, another one about just the way we...
Why don't we resolve this one?
You want me to move on, or you want to keep thinking about that one? No, I think I can go to, yeah.
It seems to me it doesn't matter if it's commercial or non-commercial plates, it's got to fit into a parking...
Yeah, that was...
If you got a big plate of a vehicle, then you got crime. You're creating a problem. I mean, I thought we were going to address oversized commercial vehicles separately.
Oh, yeah, this was not, this isn't a change.
Yeah, I know, that's why, that's why I thought it was problematic.
That's why I was surprised, so...
Yeah, so we're...
Well, I mean...
When we get into that, it'll be a larger discussion.
If you, if you wanted to, you could change it to, just no vehicle shall be eligible for residence or employer parking permit unless it's of a size that allows it to fit within the confines.
That's the attachment, is that right?
To me, that's what we meant to say, but...
Yeah, but, okay.
There's a but?
There buts, but, Larry, that, that's just a, a change that is on the scope of what we were discussing, is that...
No, no, I, I'm just thinking of how it actually would get handled administratively, like...
Because Larry...
Who in the clerk's office is going to know what vehicle doesn't fit into a space?
Right, right.
Well, I see, yeah, thinking they could get a ticket, but you're right, you have to decide whether to give them the permit.
I mean, they have a permit, they have a permit. Doesn't the application form have, can't you have, besides a...
We have make and model, isn't it?
No, but then the employer has a permit, I mean, employer gets the parking permit...
Right, yeah, for this...
And, and they hire somebody who, you know, drives a...
Right.
And they can't, yeah, yeah.
They, they need to know that it can't get handed to somebody with a, with a vehicle that's too big.
But I think the parties are not necessarily going to know.
No.
Well, in the case of the employer, we're not going to know, because we don't know what the employee is, is driving.
Right.
In the case of the resident, which this also applies to, we, I'm just suggesting that it might not be the easiest thing to figure out upon application.
No, but you'll figure it out as soon as you see the vehicle on the street, and it'll be in the law.
And then it can be revoked, yeah.
You know, I mean, this is a, I think this con, I, I understand what the issue, but I, I think this makes sense the way it is now, because at least if you know it's a van or whatever, but there may be an issue that you want to address separately, and, and it's been raised in, in a lot of other contexts, you know?
Right, right. We talked about this, that's why when I saw it again, I thought, isn't that something that you want to fix?
Something we ought to come back to.
So if we don't fix it there, that's okay, we can fix it somewhere else.
Well, when you start dealing with the-
That is more encompassing of the whole issue.
I mean, I, I think we should probably keep a list of those things that we've got that, and this. One, she has raised, and then the, um, the other side.
Well, yeah, I mean, that, that other one's already on our, it's on our radar screen because of the way the comprehensive plan made some recommendations.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're kind of intertwined.
Yeah, 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 and we have those as well.
Yeah.
So what do we do now if someone gets a, sorry, to be too focused, but okay, someone gets a permit and goes, proves they are, who they are, and blah, 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 they have a permit, now they're blocking the road all the time.
Because their vehicle's too large, is that true?
Yeah. There's got to be a revocation, revocation kind of a clause that-
Yeah.
Well, there's a revocation clause, and then that law-
Yeah, but for breaking the law, not for, not for-
It's breaking the law.
Well, yeah, they're- No, no, because we're not disallowing it right now for residential vehicles, so.
But if a residential vehicle doesn't fit in a parking spot, it gets a ticket.
That's a, yeah, that's a ticket, probably a vehicle in traffic beyond this.
So, are we allowed to, Larry seems to have an idea.
There's a blanket prohibition of any vehicle that's-
Yeah, well, that's what I-
Than a designated parking spot.
Yeah, well, that's what I just said, as a, as a possible change, like an overlay, but of the whole structure, that you can't have vehicles that are, I, I think that's something worthy of being considered, but it, it has, it doesn't have a spot for that, that we haven't placed that anywhere.
We have to park it somewhere?
I don't know, we have consensus, we're good.
Very good, very good.
Sorry.
But it, it seems to fit in the area dealing with, you know, residential parking.
Yeah, well, that's one place it fits, yeah, it fits in a lot of places.
Unless we have a, a new section that's all about oversized vehicles.
I mean, I don't know how that's going to get implemented when you start talking about-
Yeah.
Limitations of commercial vehicles parking on streets and whatnot, that's, that's sort of related, so.
So, for, for right now, I think Mary has idea of, well, keeping a list of the, the things that we see that we need to think of a way to deal with, and there's-
Outliers can't.
General consensus that we want to deal with it, and that's, we know the problem we want to solve. Well, I had one other simple thing on, on wording on that, on that same last, um, public law, and that's on page three, under E, under number of permits for households. The section, there's section one and two and three of that, but one has kind of odd wording to me. It starts out fine, each, each household in a restricted parking zone shall be permitted a maximum of one resident parking permit. And then it goes into, if there are two vehicles in the household, it being assumed that-
No, 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 there's no comment, no.
One resident parking permit is there.
One resident parking permit if there are two vehicles in the household.
Yeah, I understand, if there, and then it goes on. It being assumed that there is most, that in most instances, at least, I, I guess that the, it being assumed that in most, is that really needed, that part? It being assumed that in most instances-
I hate writing laws that say, "it is assumed."
Yes.
I really do.
Well, this was already, yeah, we didn't make-
I know it's already there.
We didn't talk through it. Fix off the wording, I mean, that's the way-
But that one just jumped out at me, is not very-
Well, I mean, if you want to do that, there's all kinds of, you know-
That was, that, that one jumped out at me, and if we could think about taking rid of that, the end of that sentence, it just seems not our style.
It's just a matter, it's just a matter of wording, it wouldn't change the-
Yeah, that would- Well, no, but then look at two, I mean, because it, it real, I know, I know it's not particularly artfully worded, and I'm not blaming the person who wrote it, but look at two, and you see, if a hardship exists where a household doesn't have a driveway to park one of its vehicles, I think one explains two.
Yes, one explains two, I know, I got there.
Yeah, buddy, I, I think you understand, but, all right, it's not a big deal.
So the, the translation of these three paragraphs, including number three, is the matrix that I was talking about.
I have it pulled up.
And I have the matrix as well, yeah, so, right, so essentially, and you're correct, there is a two, there is a two-permit limit, and that's what that language basically says, but there's a matrix that includes the number of vehicles in the household with the num, coupled with the number of off-street parking spaces, and then a column saying how many permits you're entitled to. So if you have one vehicle, no spaces off-street, you get one permit. Two vehicles, no spaces off-street, you get two permits. Three vehicles, no spaces, two permits.
Two permits, that's-
And then so on with the number of off-streets spaces will reduce the number of permits you're entitled to. You know, there's a whole matrix for that, so.
So one vehicle with one off-street gets no permit?
Correct. And that's exactly, it, you know, aside, aside from the fact that maybe it's not the best wording, that's exactly what these three paragraphs say. And that's, that's why we couldn't-
I think we should replace it with a matrix.
Well, if you want to, again, but, you know.
Well, I tell you, I have a lot of troubles with the lot, the way a lot of the stuff goes.
Yeah.
This, I don't think it's-
It's, to, to clean up all the wording, we would, it would take years.
It's certainly not the fun.
Well, that, that one was the most-
More years, more years than this topic.
It says the same thing with the process.
Next.
Through the, through the first one, I, I didn't mention a couple of things that might just be really simple, but do you want me to mention them or not?
Yeah.
Okay, this, I didn't want to interrupt Larry's flow of-
I was on a roll?
Yes, you're on a roll.
Well, you know what, you can finish up with fourteen G and go back to that.
Well, there's nothing, yeah, fourteen-
Forty G says you can't double park anyway.
Can't double park anyway, that was the odd.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Which simply reflects the current factors, by the way.
Yes, that, that was good.
Yeah.
You can't double park, right.
Except for loading it on the-
All right, all right, so just, just quickly back to the first one, the, um, A, fourteen H, for A, right. That was, let's see. Yeah, I think there was, just left off feet, um, let's see, it's page four, number six, north side of Bridge Street from a point eighty-five, nothing, eighty-five what? I think it's feet.
Eighty feet.
Um, there. Okay, let's see, page nine, at the very top of page nine, and the very bottom of page eight. Just tell me if this is reading right, it's M, it starts on page eight. No vehicle shall be parked for a period more than six hours on any day on the west side of Willis Street or the east side of Oak Street, except on Friday, when there's no parking, is allowed on Fridays between the hours of eight AM and ten AM. Something isn't right there.
Except no parking is allowed on Friday.
Part of what you read is crossed out, so.
Okay, wait, except, oh, okay, it's got no parking is allowed on-
No parking, all right.
I don't know why I, okay. Except no parking is allowed on Fridays. On both of those, on both of those streets?
Yes.
On both of those streets, on Friday. Does everybody understand that to be on both streets, Willow and, okay, all right. I guess I was getting tired when I was-
Those are the people who live on Willow and Oak?
Yes, you, you would, you would know, your, your near neighbors, right? Okay, I think those are just, those are the things that I found, that I just thought, is this, is this what was meant?
There's one thing I, from fourteen C, section seven, B on page five, if you revoke the parking permit for a SCOTF law, it says that the parking permit holder shall remove the permit from the vehicle. But how do we get the tag back? Can we not say, "shall return the parking permit?" Because in the-
I'm sorry, what is it, James?
Sorry, it's section seven on page five.
I know, but which paragraph?
B.
Okay.
It just says, "remove the permit." So we're saying a SCOTF law, we're just telling them to remove it, whereas if you go back to page two of, section two thirteen, two nine, if we revoke a parking permit for any reason, we're saying that the parking permit shall be, we've changed "removed" to "returned" to the village.
Yeah, they said, that should probably be done here.
So that we should return.
Yeah.
Shall return.
You return to the village?
The parking permit. Right there?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Your eyes weren't crossed at that point?
Well, those, those were just the things on terms of understanding what was said in those different paragraphs that I noted, but obviously, the, the further discussion of the public hearing about the content of this is important for me and for everybody. I've, I've said before, I'm not crazy about leaving the, the two streets down by the, the train station as six, one of the others are two, but that's a discussion for the public hearing, I realize.
So, assuming that these minor changes will be made, obviously, if you're so inclined, you can call for a public hearing and suggesting November nineteenth as the next meeting.
How do you all feel about calling for a public?
I would be in favor of, of getting this started.
Yes.
Provided we, we understand that we're not going to close the public hearing until we're comfortable. That we've gotten feedback from all of that, well, from as many-
Yes, from everybody.
Effective parties that have it.
If you're a commuter, if you go to a restaurant, if you work at a restaurant.
And it may not happen in the first.
Right, if you live there, yeah.
It's never going to be consensus, we have to just recognize that there's always going to be outlier positions that can't be solved.
And everyone needs to be heard.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I, I agree with, with Larry that, um-
I wasn't implying that everyone shouldn't be heard, I was just saying, after everyone is heard, we still have to come to a conclusion, that may not make certain people happy. And we'll have to acknowledge that.
I understand, please, everybody.
That's why we get the big money.
Sorry, was that third rail?
Right, definitely. Right, I, I'll, I'll accept that, that assumption, that this, that parking is the third rail of local government, yes. But we're, we're trucking on, aren't we? All right, so if, if, I'll, I'll make a motion to announce a public hearing, or do I have to make a motion? Yes.
You're calling for the public hearing, yeah.
To consider local laws pertaining to the downtown parking regulations for the November nineteenth, seven PM, Village Hall, Board of Trustees meeting. So I'll make that as a motion, do I have a second? Roll a favor?
All right.
Okay, so that'll be the start of that, okay.
Freeze, tranquilizers.
I'm going to get that on the wire.
All right, then we have reports of board standing committees and officers.
Okay, so, Tree Commission is meeting tomorrow in the library, even though voting is going on as well in the library, and there's a bunch of things they are looking at, the Tree Commission is looking at, not the voters, and voters are looking at-
They're looking at the voters.
Yeah, and so it's open to the public if someone wants to come, and the meeting is at seven fifteen, to nominally nine o'clock when the library closes, it's often done before then. Green Policy Task Force wants to mention that the food composting collection going on, is continuing to go on at the farmer's market on Sunday mornings, from I guess about nine to one thirty or one PM, I figure, I figure how late it goes to, whatever the market hours are. And they are talking about, a bunch of local sustainability groups in the various villages have been meeting with the town of Greenberg, and also are setting up, to, to look at how to make a, a shared services kind of approach to the food composting handling. And there's something coming up, which I don't know the dates of, but in Scarsdale, there's some demo available for, I think, municipal officials to understand how Scarsdale has been working on their village-wide composting initiative. And GPTF also says that they're always looking for volunteers who are interested in working on sustainability issues. And if you go onto the website, you can get the contact people that are, that are the chairpeople for the committee. And finally, the Traffic Committee, in that context, the Route Nine Corridor project about bike routes and sidewalks and potential conversion of Broadway to three lanes from four lanes, two lane in each direction, plus a turning lane, dedicated turning lane, that project has been ongoing now for quite a while, it's been funded through the state. And now, the results, the proposed plans are going to be reviewed on the seventh, November seventeenth, Saturday, at Mercy College in the Rotunda, and from eleven to twelve, it will be for municipal officials' presentation, and from one to three, it will be for local residents of all the villages. And that includes, you know, Hastings up to Sleepy Hollow, have all been involved in this process. And that's, Larry, did you say you posted that on the, the documents on the village website?
No, not yet, I just got the link today to where they're posted.
Well, the link would be good, if maybe we could put that-
Yeah, no, and, and so I'll put an announcement about the, the open house, I was waiting for their press release, which I, I finally got, so I'll get that information out now.
That's great, yeah, because, you know, if you're at all interested in this, this looks like a-
It affects everybody, really, it's very-
Yeah, it's a potential pathway, so we can, you know, again, there's a whole, there's a, you know, this is disciplinary design, right? So there's a whole funding process that has to be gone through, but in the future, it may be a way to actually get, Irvington, to get sidewalks on the east side of Broadway to increase, decrease traffic speeds, increase pedestrian safety, all that kind of stuff, less bikes.
Yes, I think a lot of the public would be interested in this, so. If I'm Mercy College, that's a pretty, pretty good place to go.
Yeah, in the main Rotunda.
Yeah.
Which is where?
The main, but it's-
The round one.
Will you walk in the front?
I'll list, I'll-
It's, it's like the main building, right? I figured we'd think-
Yeah, I'll, I'll look and see what the press release says and try to make sure it's clear.
Round is where everybody will be hitting.
It's the round Rotunda, not just where I work.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the Community Advisory Board will meet on Tuesday, November thirteenth, eight AM at the Senior Citizens Center, the Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee will meet Wednesday, November fourteenth, seven PM at the Senior Citizens Center, the Irvington Woods Committee will meet Thursday, November fifteenth, seven PM at the O'Hara Nature Center. Special thanks to the Irvington Fire Company for supplying manpower and all the goodie bags for the annual Halloween parade. Yes, looking forward to our Thanksgiving Day delivery program, again, special thanks to the De La Verdi family, owners of Same as Italian Restaurant, Indox Ferry, who will be the lead sponsor for this year's Thanksgiving Day delivery program. As always, the Derigo family will be contributing all the fruits needed to make over fifty baskets, which will be delivered to senior citizens on Monday, November nineteenth. The Derigos have done this for the village for thirty years. The Turkey Tribe, as was mentioned before, is scheduled for Sunday, November eighteenth, and the Irvington Beautification Committee will start greening of the village for the holiday season on Monday, November twenty-sixth. If you would like to help, please let us know.
Can I mention one other one that's not there, that probably should be?
It probably isn't, I left it out, but, no, I don't know.
Oh, no, the Senior Thanksgiving Dinner is Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
The Tuesday before Thanksgiving, on the line, that's not on my list.
Yeah, I, well, it just, it came out the other day, and where is it? Hang on.
The, the annual O'Hara Foundation Thanksgiving lunch is scheduled for Tuesday, November twentieth at eleven thirty.
At eleven thirty, and it's, it's, I mean, I've been helping out there for a number of years, going and helping serving stuff, and it's always jam-packed, we have a very large senior community who seem to really enjoy their Thanksgiving lunch, and-
Well, thank you both for those. I have a report from theater, just for them to point out that their, their commissioners produced, they're producing an event every month, but this was the sold-out film festival this past Saturday. I was gone, but I, yeah, so a number of comments that-
It was great, it was great, and really good production value even by the theater people.
Yes.
They, they really acted themselves as-
Well, thank you for the, they, they are, they're working hard every month to have an event, and that, and this one is always a, a sold-out one, and they're, they take it very seriously. Greg says that their next event is one of their arts partners, so they don't produce Broadway Training Center, rent space, they're an arts partner, they're doing cats in, in two weeks. So, it's not just, like I say, every, every time I talk about the theater, there's, there's there's, there's a lot of different stuff going on there. They're just keeping, you know, looking at their website. The other thing, I didn't earlier point out in the, you know, when you're talking about the traffic meeting, uh, Mark, you know, the pedestrian safety commendation. I think it was, it was mentioned before. Fifty-two-year achievement on community traffic safety. And then another one from the A A A Northeast. Congratulations, Village of Irvington, as a platinum award winner of community traffic safety. And this, as Larry was explaining to me, has, is connected to things like having a traffic committee. So all those things together are, put us in a, in a elevated position as far as concerns about, and, and results on traffic safety. The other thing, um, you know, I wanted to point out, which everybody has probably seen by now, the front of Village Hall, of course, with this project that, that was our grant here, here. An amazing product, you could see the building, you could see the historic. Look at this building, it's, um, yeah, I was like, ah. But one particular corner of that, you probably noticed, has the plaque, the Irvington Historic District plaque. So these are some of the members of the Irvington Landmark Preservation, Inc. That was one of the groups that worked, the Irvington Historical Society also contributed to that plaque. But that plaque was in Village Hall for, since twenty-fourteen.
Yeah, just about, yeah.
It's out there on that wall now.
Right side up.
Ah, right side up. So, I mean, it's, it, it may seem like a little thing, but it's so great. You know, people can just sit there, and there'll, there'll be probably a backless bench right there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And people can read that, and instead of just-
Yes.
So do you need to be sitting, do you have to sit?
Yeah, I know, it's long. People should know the history of this place. Back to the, we could shake Indians, this is important. So anyway, it looks beautiful. I can just imagine the space being used, somebody on the steps of Village Hall. You can, you can gather, not just like for a few feet. So I'm very excited about that. No, I'm not. Yes, I am. There's also, I just, the, um, the Irvington Historical Society on Friday night has a very well-known, um, prize-winning author, Russell Shorto. He's been here before. He's talking about, he's the one that wrote The Island at the Center of the World. But this, he's written a book called Revolution Song. So he's doing a, a talk and a book signing. And this is on Friday night, November ninth, seven P M. Main Street School, Irvington Historical Society. Those are often, you know, packed. So if you're interested in, this is American Revolution era books that he's written, and should be pretty interesting. So I think those are all mine.
The fire department responded to forty calls for fire and rescue in October for a total of three hundred and fifty-one calls so far in twenty-eighteen. The I F D responded to Irvington High School for a small fire in the administration office, but it was extinguished by I H S staff prior to their arrival. We responded to Dobbs Ferry multiple times with ladder thirty-six because their ladder truck is out of service. The ladder also stood by in Tarrytown during an extended event at Phelps Hospital. Department training on Tuesday, October fourth. The firefighters went to a training center in Valhalla to perform mandatory bailout training. Members used personal harness to perform self-escape maneuvers from a second-floor window. Tuesday, October eighteenth, firefighters traveled to Artsley for a joint training at an acquired structure. Firefighters performed search and rescue techniques in a three-story house with training smoke and mannequins, mannequins. Monday, October twenty-ninth, an outside instructor was brought in to review Class A firefighting foam topics. Class A foam system has been installed on the new fire truck and will improve firefighting extinguishment capabilities. Equipment, this is the most exciting. The new fire truck, engine one seventy-eight, has been manu, completed manufacturing and is at the dealer getting prepped for delivery in late November, early December. That is a welcome event indeed. And inspection twenty-eighteen, the fire department celebrated its one hundred and thirty-eighth inspection on Saturday, October sixth. Firefighters, firefighters Dave Lutomsky, Paul Wall, Louis Lambros, and Brian Smith were awarded pins for twenty years of service. Ex-chief Dan Remondo was awarded a pin for fifty years of service. The village court charged volume summary report between nine-one and eleven-two. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars in fines, fifteen thousand, six seven, seven in surcharges, one thousand, six hundred and seventeen fifty in civil fees, for a total of forty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. And as always and as usual, the vast majority of the charges received and disposed were vehicle and traffic.
And I failed to mention Greg Nielsen, since we talked about him earlier. He sent in the report as usual.
I couldn't tell you, why is he taking it before?
Right, on the highway. That's right, be careful, he. Preparing winter equipment assisted with the installation of the rumble strips on East Sunnyside Lane, painted the walkway and crosswalks inside the Station Road Tunnel. Did you notice?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Cleaned out the swales on Cyrus Field Road.
I saw them doing that.
Did you notice?
Yeah, I saw it.
Okay. Cleaning catch basins with the backfall, cleaned the silt and debris from the protective grate at the Barney's Brook on South Buck Ave Street. I'm going to go look at that. And the water department, reading meters, fall maintenance. Contractor is still, uh, renovation of the low-service, uh, still renovating the low-service transfer tank. Working on the Halsey Pond Dam project, trapped? Oh, no, no, trapped, tapped, tapped water main at ninety-five North Broadway. Assistant clerk's office with the new building system. Hydrant maintenance, cut and cap, old, non-functioning. Need service on Main Street? I don't understand that one. Don't kill Jim. Okay.
Quick DPW question, I'm, well, related DPW question. I'm assuming that, that this connect project is going to be running for a while longer?
Yeah, that's our understanding.
So, so when, when plowing is going to have to get done with all of these metal?
We, um, we had some conversations about that. You know, we're, we're pushing them to do some more permanent restoration rather than plates. But if areas do need plates, they'll most likely need to recess them if they have to stay through the winter.
Will those plates freeze before the concrete freezes in terms of a safety issue, or people are coming down?
Uh, they, they, they can, sure. But we, we-
Maybe you need a tad of caution signs or additional signs, so.
Yeah, I mean, we use, we use-
And we're salt.
We use salt pretty liberally.
Well, I guess the salt on the metal's not going to be a, a problem issue.
Right.
So it's a good thing to think about ahead of time. I think it's a very good idea.
I don't think they're going to be permanent paving before the winter, yeah. The, um, we're cautiously optimistic that, that we should have Main Street paved, not just curb to center line, but curb to curb for the distance from Ferris up to Broadway. I mean, that's certainly what we're pushing. So we'll see how that goes. But that's a good thing.
Yeah, good point. All right, um-
So one, one other question about DPW and roads and any, I think we were discussing this in passing, but I forgot what was said about center line on East Sunnyside. Any, right now, there's a lot of wet leaves on the ground, so I'm sure you can't paint them.
I, I don't know. The contractor, our engineer is, I mean, is, is on top of the contractor to get them to come back and do the final painting. They're responsible for it. We held them off, of course, because we needed to do the rumble strip. Now that that's in, they're, we're ready for them to come back. There are temporary marks there, they're not the safest thing in the world. The rumbles are there, which is helpful. But we are pushing them to come back, hopefully.
The rumbles do work nicely, but the, the marks are-
No, we need, we need permanent painting.
Definitely, right.
Yeah, so we're, we're pushing them, so.
Any administrators report?
Um, only to mention, as a follow-up to your water report, is that we are aware that there's a small leak on South Broadway in the vicinity of Downingwood or there, thereabouts. It's a repair that frankly would be a very difficult repair to make in the current state of the water system with the low-service transfer tank being repaired. Uh, it's in a very delicate balance right now. It's a very small leak. People may notice water when you don't expect to see water there, but, um, the contractor was working today on site. We expect them to get to the point of finishing their work, having their work cleaned and tested and disinfected and, and approved by the health department over the next two weeks or so, at which time we can then go ahead and make the repair. If something happens on a more serious level, we can do an emergency repair, but it will be a, a very large amount of money to repair with, with valves needing to be installed on an emergency basis and a few things happening. So we're trying to avoid that.
All right. What's pressure and, what's A U P?
Um, we've, I'll say successfully implemented the new water program and receiving program in the department. It went, went smoothly. A few things, there's still a learning curve or workouts and particulars, but the new bill went out with the new format, to the, they call it the forty-two zone. So some residents have received the new bill. I wanted to also, just to mention that without the help of the staff, it wouldn't be possible for their, you know, just willingness to, to do something new, for their input, and it's a lot of extra effort on their, on their part as well, especially to Monica Tierru, she does the water billing. She's put a lot of effort into it and also referred to Romero.
That's great to hear. Thanks, thank them, honor be held.
With, with that, of a staff that's willing and wants, wants to change and wants to upgrade it, it wouldn't be possible. So that's been really good. Uh, we're getting ready to do some borrowing. We have our bond anticipation note that is a one-year instrument that's coming due very soon. And we'll be borrowing additional money for those capital projects that were passed back in July. So the bond coming up now will be a total of almost seven point six million. I'll see what the rates are, we'll know later, we'll know next week. So those bid sheets go out this week.
Thank you.
Our audit is complete. And Susan Rosi, that's the managing partner with the audit firm, she'll be coming at the next meeting to do a presentation. For annual report.
Always busy.
She won't be staying for the parking public hearing.
And we'll have her after, though, she'll-
Right, make her wait.
Right in the middle, payback.
Mary Ann? Well, my last is a reiteration of tomorrow is Election Day. Certainly encourage everybody to vote tomorrow. And I'll make a motion to adjourn. Great. Oh, oh, comment, I'm sorry. Actually, all right. You're right, oh, how did I, oh, I'm so sorry.
Thank you, I'm Chris LaMolina from Twenty North Aster.
Yes.
And I'm here to speak for people who live in the two and three-family houses in the area, there are many of them in the downtown. And of course, parking, and particularly overnight parking, has been a chronic issue, and I congratulate the board on grappling with it. If I understood correctly, the overnight parking is now permitted on all of the downtown streets as opposed to the small period during the middle of the night that was in the code before? Do I understand that correctly?
So the, um, what's being proposed is that the restriction of not being able to park longer than one hour between three A M. and six A M.
Right.
Uh, will still be in effect in all other areas, but that restriction will not be in effect for the downtown area.
Okay, well, then my comment does apply, which is that if overnight parking during that period is permitted, it seems as though there may be commuters who go to the city for the day and into the evening or for, uh, an overnight would then be able to park there to the detriment of the residents of the area. One of the effects of having that period of time was that it really prohibited overnight parking. And I would just suggest that the board think about a device that will keep the overnight spots from being used by commuters as opposed to the residents who live in the downtown. I think that's an issue because although there will be resident permits, there also have to be spaces. And I'm sure you understand this problem very well and have been over it. Secondly, I wanted to say a word about commercial vehicles along the same lines. In many areas in Westchester, commercial vehicles, by which is meant vehicles with commercial plates, cannot park overnight on the village streets. And I don't know if that's the case here. But that's a good policy, I believe, because commercial vehicles parking on the street, again, take spaces that could be used by residents. And they have other places where they either pay or can park their commercial vehicles. So I think what you're, you've been discussing is whether a commercial vehicle will fit in a spot. But there's a different issue as to whether commercial vehicles can park.
Yeah, that was, actually, that was one of the recommendations of the comprehensive plan update, which we will get to, we actually have a change.
So, yes.
I mean, that's not to say they'll necessarily be enacted, but the board will discuss it, so it's on, it's on their agenda.
Okay, and another point, the library spaces, the diagonal library spaces, and there are many of them. Would you possibly consider making them available to people with resident permits once the library's closed? In other words, after-hours at the library? Can they be used to park overnight by residents?
And that, on the days the library closes early, not at nine, two, I guess, two days a week, it's open till nine, so it maybe wouldn't help.
During the non-working hours of the library. Because otherwise, it's somewhat of a waste, because there are a lot of spaces and they could be used.
They're worth considering.
And the, there's meetings, often when the library is closed, there's meetings and the presentation, just a thought.
Yeah.
Well, if there are days when there are special events, they can just be, signs can be put up that they're not available then. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Chris, I was looking at you the whole time, ready to call on you, and then I, I looked away from my notes. But thank you for sharing that. Thank you. All right, so then there's also review of action items.
The one main one is really just the disseminating the parking information and the public hearing, getting to all of the right people.
And just the Route Nine Corridor thing that-
And that'll get posted, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, how can I give the adjournment?
Yes.